Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, March 20, March 14th, 2022. The time is 5:30 PM. And I will turn it over to our city clerk, Josh Stecker, for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barber.
Yeah.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson. Here. Councilmember Lichten.
Here.
Councilmember Rodenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Starset.
Here.
And Councilmember Wook.
Here.
All seven present and accounted for.
Great, thank you so much. We also have with us our city attorney, Daniel Kenny. And we have our finance director, David Rodenbach. Our public works director, Jeff Langhelm. Our chief of police, Kelly Bucy. And our community development director, Katrina Knudsen. Did I miss anybody?
Me.
I don't think so. And our interim city administrator, Tony Piasak. Sorry about that, Tony. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance. You can mute or unmute, but please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Okay, seen none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rodenberg. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes, seven to zero. We have a presentation this evening from Councilmember Robin Denson with regards to the Gig Harbor Land Conservation Fund.
Thank you, Mayor Markley. Let me share my screen here. Okay. Give me a second. Hmm, that's not what I wanted to have come up. I thought I had it all up and ready to go, but I will find it again here. No worries. Alrighty, presentations. Alright, here we go. Thank you all for giving me a few minutes of your time this evening. I know a lot of you are already aware of the Gig Harbor Land Conservation Fund. And a number of you have already made donations or pledges to the fund, so thank you so much. And so I'll go through this really quickly. And if there's questions, I'm happy to take those at any point or at the end, or I'm certainly happy to talk with any of you afterwards as well. So the Gig Harbor Land Conservation Fund is something that a group of individuals has been working on, gosh, for almost a year now. And it was actually kind of the brainchild after we started getting into conversations about our first conservation project, the eleven and a half acres. That's sometimes known as the Lion's Property, just north of the wastewater treatment plant. And as you all know, when the city made application to the county for a conservation futures grant and learned that we needed a 10% match. As you know, the Pu'alip tribe stepped right in and provided that match. But we started thinking, gosh, in the future, if opportunities arise, it would be so wonderful to have a a pot of money ready to go to match grant programs like that, so that we can take advantage of opportunities to conserve land that the that the community finds important and valuable. Because as you all know, in this real estate market, owners of property are not going to wait years and years while you raise money and and find grants. So we wanted to have some funds ready to go, and we thought that the community would would like that opportunity to contribute to conservation as well. So the mission is to conserve targeted undeveloped properties in the greater Gig Harbor area. And the purpose of this is to really target properties that help us retain the beauty of our natural environment, something that we are really known for here. Of course, to retain critical habitat, which is so important. And to ensure everyone has equitable access to natural open spaces as we continue to build and develop more dense neighborhoods. We want to make sure everybody has a place to get out and enjoy nature. So some of these pictures you guys will recognize. Some of them are from inside of the city and some are from outside because this fund does cover the greater Gig Harbor area. And and the whole idea came from things that, you know, I and I know others have heard while door knocking. And also on Facebook, people are getting just so upset when more and more trees are coming down. And certainly, we do need housing. So there has to be a balance, but we want to make sure that we do actually have that balance and that we retain adequate spaces, not only for our wildlife friends and for other environmental benefits, but for the enjoyment of our residents. So a couple of the things that I thought were really pertinent to Gig Harbor is you all know that trees are really important to the health of our environment. They remove carbon dioxide from the air, they store carbon, they release oxygen. And although we are not super, super urban here in Gig Harbor, there is a phenomenon called urban heat islands, which happens when more trees are taken out and more hard paved surfaces are put in. And this has been documented certainly in more urban areas, bigger cities. But it's something that I think we need to be on the lookout as well as things warm up, climate change, you know, progresses in different directions. And we all experienced that horrible heat last summer. I had air conditioning and I still had sheets and towels hung on all my windows. And there are certainly a lot of people that that did not have those advantages. And you know, people died during last summer's heat event. So it's something that we really need to be aware of, in my opinion. Another thing that is important to the Gig Harbor area is storm water, which we've learned a lot about from Brian Ellis, our wonderful stormwater director person in Gig Harbor. And in our public works department, and we know that stormwater pollution is just an incredible polluter to the Puget Sound. I've got a little map here of some of the areas where stormwater releases into the bay in just one part of Gig Harbor. But it is throughout throughout the harbor, and it's something that we really need to be paying more and more attention to. And I know our staff certainly is. And the more development that occurs, the more of this rainwater and stormwater passes over roads, over pavement, down roofs and into our bay. It's untreated and it certainly is contributing to to the water not being as as high quality as I know that we all would like. So some of the property that we are interested in in particular is the same type of property that I know this this Gig Harbor City Council has really taken the leadership role in conserving. So it's land that contains critical habitat, wildlife corridors, historical significance, land in close proximity to some of our neighborhoods that are developing rapidly and certainly land along sensitive shorelines, both for environmental purposes, view purposes, erosion, and just making sure we're protecting the communities that are being built. This is our service area. We do serve all of Gig Harbor and the Key Peninsula. However, I made a little asterisk there that even though we serve the whole area and we really welcome interest from the whole area. Now, I think I think our priorities are going to be focused more on the urban areas and the areas that are quickly developing. So Gig Harbor, the urban growth area, you know, kind of working out from there. But we're certainly looking at things of Fox Island and East Gig Harbor as well. And so if you know the piece of property that you feel, you know, should be conserved for any variety of reasons, you can certainly feel free to reach out. And we then get in touch with some of some of the entities I'll mention in a moment to see if they've got interest in what we can do to put together a deal. So these are a couple examples. Like I mentioned, kind of the inspiration for this fund came from the city of Gig Harbor's projects. Phases one and two of the North Creek Salmon Heritage Site. So these are projects that the Gig Harbor Land Conservation Fund was not around to contribute to, but we just applaud all of you for the decisions that you've made so far in working to conserve these properties. They're just beautiful. And here's another property that a lot of us would love to preserve. I don't know how many of you all know about this. If you've lived here for a while, you probably do. It's the Thousand Acre Woods. And that's in East Gig Harbor. So it's actually out of our UGA even, but it's in an area that is becoming more and more more and more developed. And it's a real community asset. It's already full of trails. It's great habitat for, you know, a diverse group of animal species. And this is something that the Great Peninsula Conservancy has had its eye on for a long time. And we would, we would love to work with them. If only the landowner will call us back. So if you're listening, we're excited about this. The community just loves this property. So how this all works, basically, you know, what we intend to have happen is for a receiving agency or an eligible agency, we call them, would come to us already having a willing seller and, you know, an idea of a property that they want to conserve. Ideally, this is probably a property that, honey, I'm on, I'm on a meeting, sweetie. No, I'm not making chicken. Oh, I can't wait to get back into council chambers. So an entity, for example, like the Greater Peninsula Conservancy could come to us and say, we've got this plot of land. The seller is willing, we're going to go for a conservation futures grant, but we need some of our match to be secured from the community. They must commit to having a restrictive covenant on title that this land will be in conservation for perpetuity and that it's open to the public. And these are also criteria that are generally required by granting agencies. But we would want to make sure that those two things were in place since we'd be going out to the community and asking them to contribute. We want to make sure they can enjoy it as well forever and ever. Oh, and I'll just mention in terms of receiving agencies, this could be the city of Gig Harbor, it could be Penn Med, Pierce County Conservation for Terra, Great Peninsula Conservancy, it could be any nonprofit or government entity that's interested in conserving land forever and ever. And then we are reliant on community donations. So once we've decided that we do want to support a property purchase, we would either, you know, give a grant from available dollars or probably more likely the case in our early years, we'd create a community fundraising plan to raise the money to support that purchase. A little bit of the details for those of you who are interested. And this is a nonprofit fund. We work with the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation, which has been amazing. And for those of you donating, almost 100% of the money goes right to the property purchase. There's only 1.25% of the donations that goes to the foundation for their fund management, since they're the fiduciary. We have absolutely no operating funds, which should be a challenge for us. But you know that your funds are being put to good use. And we know that these types of properties move really fast. So we've got our fund invested in short term investments right now, although we are working on an endowment. But we want these funds to be ready to go so that we can conserve property before it's all gone. This is our first project, and this is another one you'll be familiar with. The city of Gig Harbor, as you know, is under contract for this 5.15 acre parcel right on the other side of the street from phases one and two. You're all familiar that it has a preliminary approved plat for 18 homes. And it's important for not only historical and cultural purposes. It's the site of Twolka, part of the site of the main village site of Squababsh people. And it's also the site of the Burnham Homestead, which is really cool. So there's a lot of history here. And another interesting note is that the development agreement for this parcel provides for a direct discharge exemption of stormwater. So right now and in the future, you'll see that although they do have to install some sort of a filter, stormwater will be going right into Donkey Creek, right at the mouth of the creek, which is going to be detrimental to the salmon population. And we have told the city that we will set a goal of raising $50,000 in pledges to support this purchase with hopes that this will strengthen their grant application to the county. And as I just included this here, so you can see that we've got phase one and phase two, and then this will be phase three. So this whole area as part of the North Creek watershed area. All of this is important, not only for the health of the Salmon Creek, but for wildlife corridors and human corridors. Because there will be some really cool trails through here, hopefully all connected together. I really think that 40 acres of conservation right here in Gig Harbor is really going to be a jewel of the harbor that we can all be proud of. Here's a couple pictures of our group touring the site with Parks Director Matthew Keel. Couple weeks ago, he took us through so we could take a look at it. And as you can see here, in addition to just a beautiful piece of land, there are some opportunities for restoration. Some additional plantings of Northwest native species. We found plenty of Scotch broom in there that we could get rid of. And we even suspect that there is some asphalt in areas because of the Burnham Homestead in particular, so that there's some work that we can do to improve this habitat, which is wonderful. This is our advisory board, and we have a very robust website at gigharborlandconservation.com. And I invite you all to go have a look at that. You can learn more about this project, about advisory board members, all hardworking professionals, and about how the fund works. And then if you are interested, we are accepting donations. You can make a donation through the website. Or if you would like to make a pledge for the North Creek project, because because this is still in progress and we're still waiting to see whether we get the grant. Right now, instead of taking donations for that project, we're taking pledges to make sure that the that the purchase is going to go through. So that can be done just by emailing this this email address. And thanks to our collaboration with the Greater Tacoma Community Foundation, we can accept all sorts of gifts from, you know, straight regular cash gifts to real estate stocks and planned gifts. And then we also need volunteers. So if anybody would like to lend a hand, we're looking for all sorts of help, whether it's event day coordination or real estate research, graphic design, photography, things like that. We certainly welcome everybody's contributions. And that is all. Do you guys have any questions?
Yes, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Denson. That's an excellent presentation. I had a question about who actually owns the property once it's sold. You said that the landowner has to agree to some pretty restrictive covenants and whatnot. Does that imply that they, what the Land Conservation Fund actually purchases is a promise to, or do they actually own the property?
No, so the purchaser will be what we are calling like the receiving agency or the eligible agency. So in the case of the five acre property, the purchaser and owner will be the city of Gig Harbor, you know, assuming that all goes through. So it's the city that would have to agree, and of course, they do.
I got it. Thanks.
Right, that got confusing. You know, there are opportunities sometimes to purchase conservation easements, in which case the the original owner still owns the land, but then we just purchase an easement for conservation forever and ever. But in those cases, typically, they won't allow the public to access the property. So I don't really see that that happening in our model, but we're open to it.
Any other questions for Councilmember Denson?
Well, thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Wook.
I don't really have a question, but this is a wonderful fund. And thank you, Councilmember Denson, for putting this together. It's a great opportunity for all of our citizens to be involved. It's just wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks for all the support to everybody.
Thank you for that presentation. This has been an exciting thing to watch this come to life and meet your group. And just we're excited to see where this goes in the future for you all and for us as well. So thanks so much. Okay, so Mayor's report tonight, as most of you have probably seen in our press release, we have chosen a new city administrator, Linda Kelly. We are so excited to bring her on board shortly. And although we will be very sad to see our interim city administrator, Tony Piasak, we have really appreciated his service and will continue to until we make the transition. So thank you all for your warm welcome already of Linda. She's already feeling your your warmth from from a distance right now. And then shortly she will be with us. So really excited, really excited to bring her on board. Also, we are going to be meeting in person starting March 28th for our Monday night council meetings. Yay. I know we're all very excited to see the public and have you all join us in council chambers. So masks will be optional. Please, you know, we just ask that you come and be as comfortable as you can. There will be some staff in council potentially having masks still. So if you're worried about that, don't be. We are, we are all really just trying to make this a very smooth and very very peaceful transition coming out of this pandemic. So we welcome you to join us in person on March 28th. And our study sessions for now and our commissions will continue to be virtual until we can figure out our new AV system in council chambers and possibly some other AV equipment for our community rooms. We'll be able to to deliver a much better much better meeting to you all when you can see us and hear us all and know who's talking. Right now, that's just not available aside from council chambers. So we're going to limp along a little bit in our in our virtual option until we get that new equipment, but it's still going to be better than it is. And just we're still, we're still looking forward to seeing you all in person. So um, city administrators report, Tony Piasak.
Thank you, Mayor. With regards to the city administrator, Linda Kelly, we are in the process of negotiating a contract with her right now. Over the next couple of days, I'm going to be calling each council member to give you a status report on that. And get your input to make sure that we're putting together a contract that all of us, including Linda, feel is fair and works for all of us. So expect to hear from me over the next couple of days. The only item I have is with regard to the Harbor History Museum. We have put some money in the budget and a project in the budget to provide them some assistance. There is the, what, $30,000 that goes in there specifically to defray the cost of admission. We have $150,000 amount in the budget that is supposed to be a combination of in kind and cash support with the in kind being the repair on their driveway. We need to get an agreement put together with them. And we have heard from the Harbor History Museum, and they have a couple of requests that I want to bounce off the council before we finalize the the contract. So the first one is with regards to the driveway in 117,000 versus 150,000 of just straight cash donation that they would prefer see happen rather than having it be a combined cash and in kind services. So what that means is for 2022, we would be giving them 150,000 in support of the project they're doing with the Shannon Dora. I'm sorry, Shannon Dora. And then we would also repair the driveway. They've also asked that we commit to two additional $150,000 contributions in 2023 and 2024. Again, as part of the project to rehabilitate the Shannon Dora and make that a very beautiful display area that they've been putting together. So I'm asking for council direction. Are you comfortable with that? We would make it a three year agreement versus a one year agreement. And we would have those terms. Plus, there'll be a few other items that go in there that would have to do with their, what they're going to be using money for and how it's going to be used and reimbursed to them and all that. But I just need to know from council that you're okay with that. And then Josh and I will move forward and get that document, that agreement finished.
Councilmember Wook.
I'm very comfortable with that. I did not think that the driveway was going to be included in the 150,000. I thought that was a separate line item.
Well, that's, that's the way it was put into the 2022 budget. So we very specifically need council to say, we don't want the budget to say that. We want it to be 150 for the project and 33,000 for the driveway.
So I would prefer it to be the straight 150 for the project because this is, these are matching funds that they need for this project. And and then the driveway would be a separate item. That's what.
And the driveway can't be used as matching funds, by the way.
Yes. So so I would much prefer having this driveway be a separate item and have that 150 be true for three years.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Rodenberg.
I'm in agreement with that as well. I think that a three year commitment also gives them some some stability when they go out to look for other donations. The fact that they will have this money gives more confidence to people that may be donating for the larger project for the Shannon Dora. So I think it's a good idea to give them that that root money. Thanks.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. So when we say we'd repair the driveway, is, are you envisioning the city going out with a contract and then we're funding the contract, we oversee the contracts, the work gets done? I'm assuming that's not city property. It's, it belongs to the Harbor History Museum, or am I not correct on that?
I'm going to ask the public works director to answer that question.
Councilmember Henderson, the area where we're talking about the driveway repair is city right of way. The city right of way is quite wide through there. It goes all the way about down the fence. As far as who would complete the work, at this point, we have been trying to make it a simple enough solution that we don't have to hire a contractor, meaning we can find the time within our own crews to do it without getting into a specialty work that would take our crews more time than they have available to them. So we need to do a check on the design. It is, that design is supposed to be completed in house. We were hoping to wait until we got our associate engineer position added and onboard. But I don't know if we're going to be able to wait that long.
Okay, so it sounds like we would be doing it with in house labor design and ideally, that's how we set it up. It's just taking the steepness out of the driveway or what's, do we know what?
It's, it's the vertical curve. It's the change in direction.
Got it.
Yeah.
We don't want vehicles high centering on there.
Councilmember Lichten.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that I would also support a three year ongoing commitment of the 150,000 to support the Shannon Dora Restoration Project.
Thanks.
Thank you. And by the way, what you're doing tonight here is giving Josh in the direction. The agreement is actually going to come back for you to take a look at, ask questions about, and formally approve.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Denson.
Yes, I'm supportive as well, but I was wondering, Director Langhelm, can we wait to do the driveway repairs until after the Stinson Harbor View about is complete? Location of that construction work?
Yes, we wouldn't be able to even start on that until August at the soonest. It's likely going to be a project that would be completed in September.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
I don't see any. Okay, all right. I think.
I've got my direction. Thank you. That's all I had to say.
Okay, thank you so much. We will now open the, open it up for public comment on non agenda items. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak?
Mayor, we have one written comment submitted that I'll read first.
Oh, thank you for the reminder. Yes.
One moment here. This comment is from Thomas Wick. He says, for public comment, I'm respectfully requesting that all interested parties read the Tacoma News Tribune article regarding the city of Gig Harbor's stated need to pass ordinance 1465. As it will explain the motivation behind this good faith effort on a citizen's part to obtain public records. And most importantly, it will explain why the city rejected this reasonable and good faith effort to resolve this matter without further delay. Good afternoon, Mr. Piasak. And to all those copied, we public records request dated September 25th, 2020. I just discovered an envelope in my mailbox that was sent via US mail from the city of Gig Harbor that based on your most recent email likely contains a $20,000 check I sent for the completion of the records request for the public records dated September 25th, 2020. In an effort on my part to demonstrate a good faith effort to resolve this matter without further delay, I'm respectfully requesting you provide an answer to the following question. If you, if I agree to resubmit this request for public records, keeping in mind it would be submitted after the city approved ordinance 1465, will the city provide me a guaranteed no exceptions date by which this request for public records will be completed as requested in one dispersment before I do so? Essentially, I am asking, all I'm asking for is reassurance that this request for public records won't be arbitrarily deemed a fishing expedition and that it won't be treated as such. I would, of course, add one caveat. The city would have to go on record agreeing that in the event they fail to honor this agreement in any respect, they would assume full responsibility for any assessed fines, penalties. That would be accrued daily absent this proposed agreement. If agreeable, I see this as a win win. The clock would stop for the assessment of fines and penalties that have continued to accrue daily secondary to the city's failure. Refusal to produce public records timely on the date, I resubmit this request for public records. And I have a guarantee date by which this request for public records will be completed as requested in one dispersment. Please provide a response at your earliest convenience. Respectfully, Thomas W. Downhill, Pierce County Property Owner. Please provide a response at your earliest convenience. Respectfully, Thomas W. Downhill, Pierce County Property Owner.
Thank you, Josh, and thank you, Mr. Wick, for that comment. Uh, anyone in the audience wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda? You see hands right? I see one.
Hi. Can council hear me?
We can. Go ahead, Mr. Keon.
Well, good evening.
And please take your name and address for the record.
Sure. This is Kit Keon, thirty-one oh four Shalene Street. I am pleased to see the city has picked a new permanent city administrator. Congrats. I also want to thank the Public Works Department on their cleanup effort at Wilkinson Park. The blackberries and invasion invasive vegetation were taking over the Holly Tree Forest. At one time, more Holly was exported from Gig Harbor than anywhere in the world. And this is an example of the continued cleanup job of our maintenance employees and our public works department. The cleanup looks great. On a separate note, I want to bring attention to the lack of accountability of our IT director that continues to go on for years. Last month, council approved surplus seeing more IT equipment. Included in this surplus was my one and a half year old laptop that costs roughly two thousand dollars and a barely ever used newer fourteen hundred iPod, iPad. Over the past two years, almost everyone, every employee's pads, laptops and computers have been surplused. Many that were barely even a year old. Much of this was without employees' knowledge. When employees saw this happening, some even hid their equipment, not wanting this to happen to them. With over, with this, over seventy thousand dollars of new equipment has been purchased. And that figure is probably closer to a hundred thousand over two years. No one would know what this figure is because the council never approved these expenditures. The head of IT just continues to do this without anything going to council. As mayor at that time, I never found out how this was allowed to be happened, how this was allowed to happen. And it continues to occur with no accountability. This has nothing to do with the seven hundred and fifty thousand of new IT equipment in the service room. This is taxpayers' money and should not go unchecked. This is the tip of the iceberg of unaccountable actions by our IT director. Other examples are repeating, repeatedly having three to four help tickets generated from one. This appears to make it seem like there is more work that needs to be done. When I asked the IT director if he had talked to the past city administrator, Bob Larson, about supporting three permanent hires for IT, the answer was yes. Only to find out the real answer was he had talked to him and he was not supportive of that. The truth was not given. This is not to meant, this is not meant as a personal attack. The surplus again of more equipment last month is just the latest example of taxpayers' dollars being wasted without any accountability. This public comment is meant to give council and the new city administrator heads up to what is and has been going on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the public wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? I don't see any other hands raised. Josh, do you?
No other hands.
Okay. We will close the public, public comment on non-agenda items. And we will move on to our first item of new business, which is Resolution twelve thirty-five, expressing solidarity with the Ukrainian people. And this will be our city clerk, Josh Sicker.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, this resolution was created. I'm sure we're all very aware and closely following the situation in Ukraine. Um, that's gripping current world events and news. Um, this resolution is brought to you at the request of Councilmember Barber, so I will turn it over to you and she can explain her desire and motivation. Um, we've heard from several other council members that support this resolution. Um, and so we have put it on the agenda for you to approve.
Thank you. Um, and you are correct that I spoke with several other council members about doing this. And so I had the time to write the, write the resolution and we feel that it's a wonderful way for the city to be able to show our support for the people of Ukraine and to express our concern about what is happening in, in, not in the city of Ukraine, in the country of Ukraine, um, to express our support for those people and, um, condemning what is happening in their country. So do I need to read it?
You don't need to read it. I'm, I, it's in council's packet, so.
Right.
They should have, have read it. So really, um, just asking if there's any clarifying questions from council, Councilmember Rundenberg. You're on mute.
I think it is important to read it because this is going to be recorded. And the point here is to let the public know our condemnation of the actions of Russia. So I think it's very important that we read it.
Okay, go for it.
Then I shall read it. Resolution, um, twelve thirty-five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Gig Harbor, Washington, condemning the invasion of Ukraine and expressing solidarity with Ukrainian people. Whereas Russian President Vladimir Putin sent troops to invade the sovereign nation of Ukraine. And whereas hundreds of civilians have been killed and thousands are in unsafe locations or attempting to flee. And whereas millions more are evacuating to neighboring countries, resulting in the largest humanitarian crisis since World War Two. And whereas the United States and other nations have united to place sanctions on Russia for its aggression. And whereas the United States has taken immediate action to prohibit financial investment and transactions with Russia. And the United Nations General Assembly has called numerous emergency sessions in pursuit of peace in Ukraine. And whereas Gig Harbor is home to many Ukrainian families who have relatives in Ukraine fearing for their lives. And whereas everyone in Gig Harbor should find ways to show support for our Ukrainian friends here at home and in Ukraine. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Gig Harbor. Section one, the city hereby condemns the invasion of Ukraine and stands in solidarity with Ukrainian people adopted by the city council of the city of Gig Harbor at a regular meeting thereof held this fourteenth day of March, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Councilmember Barber. Are there any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, we will open it up for public comment. Uh, Josh, were there any written public comments submitted?
No written comments for this item.
Okay. Um, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak? And Josh, remind me of the prompts to, is it star nine or star six?
If you're calling in my, if you're calling in my phone, just press star nine to raise your hand.
Okay. I'm not seeing any hands. So we will close the public comment and go to council deliberation and action. Any additional comments from council? Yes, Councilmember Look.
I move to approve Resolution twelve thirty-five.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilmember Henderson.
Just discussions, I guess. Um, I support Resolution twelve thirty-five. I think it's an excellent move on our part. Um, I, you know, I, I understand the city of Gig Harbor can't do a lot by itself and but I think we all need to take some time to really understand what's going on there. Um, right now, over close to two point seven million people, million Ukrainians have left their country. Uh, it's not just they can leave their country, then come on back. They are, they've lost everything. They've lost their houses. They've lost their jobs. They've lost their savings, their retirement. Many have lost their lives. Many are there without their husbands, brothers and sons to trying to defend against this. So understand we, we can't do a lot, but I, I, I do support this and like to thank, uh, Councilmember Barber for pushing this resolution forward.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? Okay, seen none. We have a motion on the table to approve Evolution twelve thirty-five and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. And we will move on to our second item of new business, which is the Harborview Stinson Intersection Improvements Change Order Number Three. And this will be our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, council. As you know, the Harborview Stinson Intersection Project, uh, was planned to be constructed in two phases. The first phase was to be constructed in fall of twenty twenty-one and focused on utility locate, relocations. And the second phase was, had been scheduled to begin on March first. Uh, at the beginning of this year, uh, the city started working on a public outreach campaign to inform the businesses and the residents and the traveling public about the upcoming Phase Two work. Uh, we started getting the word out in early February. And as soon as we got the word out, we started to hear questions, concerns from the businesses and the residents about, uh, the impacts that they're going to be seeing. Um, we responded to that. We reached out to local businesses, the Chamber Downtown Waterfront Alliance, and suggested we start holding some meetings. And so we ended up holding three meetings so far with businesses and residents to hear their concerns and review the options that we have before us and receive input. Uh, those meetings have resulted in a change to the traffic control plan than what we originally proposed and is, uh, the origin of the proposed change order that you have before you tonight. This change order is intended to reduce the amount of time that the current detour route will be in place. We're proposing to do that by incentivizing the contractor to work longer shifts and work more days. Uh, the contractor's original schedule shows the detour would be ending on June ninth. And I want to be clear, that's not the project ending on June ninth. That's the detour ending on June ninth. But this change order you have before you tonight would incentivize the contractor by paying five thousand dollars per working day, which is not holidays and non, uh, weekends. Uh, up to a maximum of seventy-five thousand dollars so that the roundabout is paved and the detour route is removed ahead of schedule. If the contractor does take advantage of all of the money available to them, the change order would remove, uh, or would have that detour removed uh, three weeks ahead of schedule. So that would put it into about mid-May. Um, I do want to be clear that this change order again is not changing the anticipated physical completion date that we've been talking about all along in July of twenty twenty-two. Um, it's just going with a proposal here is to just remove the detour, uh, get the final lift of asphalt and allow the traveling public during non-construction hours to have uh, use of the roundabout and its anticipated, uh, layout. And then during construction, during the workday, during construction, it would be back to one lane alternating. And it's, but we'd be able to go in both directions, but with traffic control and flaggers. So the twenty twenty-two budgeted amount of two point one million dollars would not be exceeded with the approval of this change order. So with that, um, I'm happy to review background if you'd like, but that's all I had for a presentation at this point and have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Director Langham, thanks. Um, I, I support this. I, I do want to maybe help set some expectations though. This is an incentive, not a direction. So in fact, the contractor could say, I can't get it done any quicker. We don't pay any money, understands. Or I can get it done a single day sooner, which we pay five thousand or fifteen days sooner, we pay seventy-five thousand. Um, and so I want to make sure that nobody starts looking at dates and saying that's when it's going to be due. Um, do our contracts, I'm assuming our construction contracts include weather delays. So if we, it could be that they'll finish multiple days early from the incentive, but still be pushed out to June or something just because of weather delays. I just want to make sure that people understand it, there's no guarantee um, that they will finish early. It's an incentive, which is an excellent idea. But I just want to make sure people don't start looking at dates and saying, okay, we're, we are paying seventy-five thousand dollars to get it done by this date because it may not happen that way. It's the best we can do and I applaud you for coming up with a solution.
Thank you, and I appreciate the reiteration that, uh, these are working days and we do allow for weather days. Um, I haven't checked with our construction supervisor, George Flanagan yet, but I anticipate that today would be a weather day and it would not be counted as, as a working day. So, um, it would be impacted right there just from one day today.
Thank you. Councilmember Look.
Yes, Jeff, thanks so much, um, for working on this. I think it's something our citizens would like to see. What we don't know or we haven't heard yet is the contractor interested in this?
Uh, yes, the contractor has signed the change order. They're interested. Um, again, though, they, they will give it their best. In fact, they even started working out on Friday longer, on Fridays, which is not in the contract because they had already worked their forty hours, but they have, are working now. They worked last Friday and they worked a full, long day. So they're already starting on this, trying to achieve, uh, the shorter duration.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Councilmember Rundenberg.
Yes, can someone remind me when the Maritime Gig Festival is and when that parade is supposed to march through that intersection?
Yes, I will tell you. It is, uh, June fourth is the Maritime Gig Parade. It's the first Saturday in June. Um, we have already spoken with the contractor at length that if they're out in the roadway, that they need to be clear of that intersection for the entire weekend, have the intersection, uh, clear and available for the parade to occur. So.
Thank you very much, Director Langham.
You bet.
Councilmember Liggins.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so Director Langham, could you remind us what the construction hours that will be allowed? Just so that the neighborhoods will know potentially, um, what to expect with the construction noise?
Well, the construction hours dictated by code are what we provide the contractor. They can work anywhere within those hours. Uh, the construction hours are Monday through Friday, seven AM to eight PM. And Saturday and Sunday, eight AM to eight PM.
Okay, great. Great. That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other clarifying questions, I will open up the public comment. Um, Josh, were there any written public comments received?
No written comments for this item.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this agenda item? You see one hand? Okay, is, is this Ms. Coyle?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Great. Um, yeah, my, first of all, thank you for trying to work around and, and have this project not go into the summer too much and hurt the businesses and, and frustrate everyone. It's, it's tough on you, uh, as well, Director, trying to manage all this. But, you know, you can't, anyway, thank you for the work you've been doing on this. I would like to ask that, uh, we're, point out that, uh, there are no flaggers on these scenes. And I walk Harborview every day just about, and I know other people who do as well. And it is quite dangerous walking through it without a flagger and someone stopping traffic because it's really not easy to navigate. It's not clear. That's the first piece. But a case in point today, um, there was a woman out there, by the way, who was very helpful in guiding, but no flags, nothing was really clear. She just kind of spotted you and said, okay, go this way. Um, that said, today I was walking in the rain and the whole section that I decided I have to walk on is all mud. Yeah, which you can't help that, right? They're in the middle of doing the work. Uh, but when I started to walk through the area where they were working, a huge front loader uh, was backing up into across the, the walkway. And, uh, it was really quite, he had no idea I was there and no one else was looking and watching out for it. If I hadn't been paying attention, i- it could have been a catastrophe. So I'm just wondering, are there any, uh, plans to get more clear flaggers out there? Is that a, a requirement generally? Um, certainly for safety reasons, I'd hope so.
Thank you, Ms. Coyle. Uh, we, we don't generally have a question and answer period for public comment, but I think Director Lang, Langham may be able to answer this quickly, so I will, I will allow him to do that.
Uh, yes, Mayor and Nancy, yes, this, uh, contractor is required to, uh, have flaggers. Yes, Mayor and Nancy, yes, this contractor is required to have flaggers. They are required to provide a pedestrian path, a safe pedestrian path. I will be talking to the construction supervisor tomorrow to see if there's a way to be more clearly delineate and improve that pedestrian path and see if there's any safety improvements that might need to be addressed.
Thank you very much for doing that, Director Langhout. Much appreciated. And thank you, Ms. Coyle, for your, for your comments. And we're happy to hear that you are safe. Anyone else from the public that wishes to speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing no hands, I will close the public comment and we will go to council deliberation and action. Any comments from council? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve this change order? Councilmember Henderson.
I move to approve Harborview St. intersection improvement change order number three.
I'll second.
Okay. Josh, do we need to read the suggested motion or does, does that suffice?
That should suffice.
Okay, great. We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Thank you, council. And we will move on to council reports and comments. And our, the one we have listed is RFP for a citywide radiation baseline study, and I will turn it over to Councilmember Wood.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Markley. Good evening, everybody. The intent of this conversation this evening about electro magnetic, about electric magnetic fields is to see if council is supportive for a baseline study for Gig Harbor. Mayor Markley and I were chatting with a company in Port Orchard. And if this was possible to do in a city, and it is possible to do for a city, this particular company also said the cost would be about $1,000 for anywhere from 40 to 50 location reads around Gig Harbor town. This would be like taking an inventory of electric magnification waves at 50 different locations around Gig Harbor. This study will be filed away for the future, so we're not anticipating doing on anything on it right now. But it's just a future study to have on hand. And this study is supported by the mayor, Mayor Markley, Development Director Knutson, and interim city administrator Tony Pasecki. Electricity is a beneficial part of our daily lives, but whenever electricity is generated, transmitted or used, electric and magnetic fields are created. The city is getting ready to have 5G come to town and who knows what may come in addition to that and who knows what may come after that. So before this happens, this is a really good opportunity we have to go to 40 or 50 different locations around the city and take a reading on what the current electric magnetic fields are. That's pretty much it. Does anybody have any questions on this? Okay, so, yes, Councilmember Lichten.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. So I have a couple of questions. And so with this baseline study, at these 40 to 50 locations, what frequencies are they going to be recording? What sources? And then if you have a baseline study, is there something in particular you're looking for in the future to see how it would change? I, I'm just curious the purpose behind it.
So the purpose is just to simply know what the readings are. And I'm assuming it would be a low frequency. It would be whatever Director Knutson wants to put in the request for a proposal. And, and it's just a basic reading of what we have today. And when will it be taken again? We don't know.
So I know that radiation comes, we have everyday radiation from multiple sources, including sunlight, including, you know, the existing radiation. I know there is concern about 5G, so I did some research around it. And I was hoping I could share that, just a few quotes of what I found. If that would be okay. So the American Cancer Society to date has, their official statement is that no adverse health effects have been causally linked to exposure to wireless technology. And this is drawn from studies across the entire radio spectrum. And 5G is non-ionizing radiation. And some of these studies have included the frequencies used by 5G. As the frequency increases, as it does slightly in 5G, there is actually less penetration. I'm reading directly from the American Cancer Society. Into body tissues, absorption of energy becomes more confined simply to the surface of the skin. Overall exposure remains below international guidelines and no consequences for public health are anticipated. And then the world, the World Health also says there's been very little research showing that radio frequency waves used in 5G are any more or any less a concern than any other radio frequency wavelengths used in telecommunications. So it's a relatively low cost study. I'm just wondering what the benefits are for when all of the meta-analysis to date and the World Health Organization, American Cancer Society both do not believe that it's a problem. So that's my comments.
Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering, Director Knutson, would you be able to amplify any more on this topic? Sounds like you might have had a, a hand in helping Jenny with it. So if you have something to add, I, I definitely like to hear that.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. For the record, this, we had code and Jeff, feel free to jump in, please, too. We updated the codes probably three years ago, title 17 and title. Title 12, thank you, for Public Works Regulations as well as Design and Aesthetics for 5G. And during that process, we had a, a number of citizens come forward concerned about potential health ramifications of 5G deployments. And during that timeframe, the attorney that we were working with suggested that if the city wanted to, they could undertake an RF study to evaluate current levels to have at some point in, in case there was an adverse effect or in, if we needed that evidence sometime into the future. If this were to go forward, we would rely on the contractor chosen to tell us, I am not an RF frequency expert by any means. So we would rely on the experts to tell us what we would be looking for. And as for the discussion with Councilmember Wood, she was very involved during that process a, a number of years ago. And in speaking with her about this, I, I let her know the appropriate way to bring this forward to council to gain support and come back with a, a contract for council approval, if that cost was necessary.
Thank you, Director Knutson. I just want to make sure that if there's enough worry about this, $1,000 doesn't sound like much to me. And I'm not sure what we would get. I'd hate to spend $1,000 and have somebody come in with some readings and we're not exactly sure what they mean. If this is enough of a worry, it might take a larger, more intense study. And then still the question is, what are we going to do with the data? It's to understand where RF radiation is coming from and what portion of that is, say, driven by a 5G tower or a 4G tower or the power lines that go up and down Cushman Trail. It gets a little bit more complex. So I, I, I'd just be hesitant about trying to get a simple answer at this cost, which it may not even provide an answer enough. So that's kind of what I'm thinking.
Councilmember Henderson, I do believe that we would need to put out a request for qualifications for this work to go through that appropriate process. So it may end up being more than 1,000, but it sounds like the mayor and Councilmember Wood have discussions to give a ballpark.
Okay, thank you, Director Knutson.
Interim City Administrator Tony Pasecki.
Thank you, Your Honor. When it comes to a study like this where we're looking at radiation, radio frequency waves and the like from telecommunications and other type of utilities, I want to be very clear that council understands that while we have the ability to do some regulation as to how they're placed and where they're placed, what we can't do is say, you can't do 5G. That is being controlled by the federal government, the FCC. So I want to make sure everyone has the understanding that we don't want to create unrealistic expectations that we do this study now and then five years later when 5G is deployed, either we or somebody else does a study and there's a finding that there's more radiation or RF frequency waves. We can't then go to the companies that we have given a franchise to and say, see, this is a problem. Take that out. That's not our, our role. That's not our ability. We don't have that ability to do that. That being said, from a purely academic standpoint, I think this is an interesting sort of thing to do. And if five to 10 years down the road, there are issues that pop up as a result of these type of facilities, we could serve as a data point, but only that. That's all we would be. The city attorney and I talked about it and I see his hand up. So I'm going to start and he'll probably jump in. One of his fears is, so we do the study and then five, 10 years down the road, we do another study and it shows that there's some sort of a problem or perceived problem. You could have somebody say to the CDC, you shouldn't have allowed that in the first place. Or see, you now need to go and do something about this. And we don't have the authority to do anything about it. And this is where he and I may disagree a little bit. There may be a lawsuit that happens, but I think our clear defense is we don't have the ability to impact that or change that or to make this, whatever the problem is perceived to be, go away. But it ends up being a a lawsuit that you have to respond to, spend money responding to. And any of you who've ever been involved in a lawsuit and I'm willing to bet it's a lot of you, those aren't fun. And they can be expensive and they can be very frustrating. And that's my comment, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Daniel Kenny. You're on mute, Mr. Kenny.
Sorry about that. I agree with everything that Tony just said, and I just wanted to reiterate, since he's already said it, that we are pre, the city of Gig Harbor is preempted from regulating the health impacts of telecommunications. The FCC has that, federal government has that. And so if you do spend this money, and then also as, as Tony put it well, you, you won't be able to deny franchises or permits or anything like that based on this information. And so I think a data point is just a good way to, to describe it is you're not really going to be able to do anything with this information. And the information would not be gathered by the FCC in its own enforcement or own analysis. And I, I don't know one way or the other, whether they would accept your information in its own investigations. My thought is that they would not. They will have their own tests and studies and people to do that. But perhaps there's a way to ask and to see whether or not there's a, you know, a common analysis that could be done so that it would be useful. But I just really want to emphasize that I, it, by no means am I saying that this has no utility or is, or is not worth your time or money. That's for you all to decide. Not for me to comment on, but, but you can't reject permits or franchises and you can't regulate health impacts. So I just want to make that very clear for everybody on this call and for the public is that we have expectation setting on what this information can be used for. And if you choose to move forward, that's certainly up to this body to decide.
Thank you. Councilmember Storset.
Yes, thank you. So I have a, just a question. I'm curious and City Attorney Kenny, you just kind of answered on this a bit, but I'm curious if there's already studies out there for this, that it's not something that we need to conduct ourself. And I realize it is a, a small amount of money, but is it, you know, setting precedent for doing other studies like this down the line? Is it, you know, ever, does it become every year or just as things advance? So that's what I'd be curious. I tried Googling and doing some research on this. I, I couldn't find anything myself. Maybe it's with, with the FCC. But curious if anyone else on the, on the call knows.
I could speak to that a little bit if that's okay.
Yes.
Sure. So the FCC has gone through rulemaking on the standards for 5G in particular. That rulemaking recently closed without changes to their, their studies and their health impact standards, if you will. I'm not an RF engineer, so pardon the probably inaccurate terms, but they just went through that process and did not change any of those standards. And so for an approved 5G facility or for a 5G facility that is approved for operation by the FCC, that would be within, you know, the, the, the parameters set by the FCC for a, a facility that does not cause health impacts if operating, you know, consistent with how it is approved. And that would be the same for everything else that's installed into the community. It needs to be operating, you know, consistent with its approvals. Certainly, there could be situations where something, you know, isn't maintained or is installed improperly and is emitting in a way that it shouldn't be. So I'm not saying everything out there is just perfect. That's, that's not it. But if it is installed and operating consistent with the FCC standards, the FCC believes that those are all healthy. There are lots of health studies. There was a lot submitted on 5G with the recent rulemaking that closed without a change. They're kind of, it's still kind of in process. To be totally honest, it was appealed. But there's lots of opinions on this in terms of the health impacts. But if you just look at what the FCC is doing, if it's approved, it should be consistent with the FCC's health standards. And again, the city would be preempted on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lichten, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Barber, you haven't had a chance to speak yet.
Thank you. I guess I, I have one opinion on this and now I'm kind of going, yeah. After listening to Tony and also Daniel, I'm trying to figure out the, the purpose of the study. It is only $1,000 or seemingly, we don't know that yet because we haven't gone out to ask for it yet. But I'm concerned about the liability that, that it could put the city in by doing it. And I'm also concerned by what I'm hearing also about is, as we've heard, if we're talking about 5G, there's not a whole lot we can do. So I guess I have some questions and I'd like to have some of those probably a little bit more detail before we decide exactly what we're going to do or not do on this issue. I thought I had the answers and now I'm really confused.
Councilmember Lichten.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I do have concerns about the usability, accuracy and quality of any data point we would get from an unregulated source that would do this measurement because in, in science and in healthcare studies and health impact studies in particular, you need quality, peer-reviewed data to make it usable. And just echoing the comments, and I appreciate all the different perspectives and I understand, you know, people's concern, you know, when things change. But unless it's peer-reviewed, quality-controlled, quality research, we could have this data point and it could be useless in the future. That's what I'm concerned about. I wonder if anybody, any of the directors know of, are there other cities that have done this? Are there any other models that anyone knows of? And are there any resources? I couldn't find any from AWC or MRSC on this issue.
I'm not aware of any other cities that are undertaking this at this time. There are a number of lawsuits, as our city attorney mentioned, regarding the rulemaking for various reasons, but I'm not aware of any particularly related to the RF emissions.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, I just want to clarify that we're not making a decision on whether we're moving forward or not with this right now. We're just giving staff direction about whether to proceed with putting out an RFP. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
And then we, so we could continue to have. And then we, so we could continue to have this discussion and then vote whether we wanted to move forward or not. I am very interested in this because I was on council along with Councilmember Woo and Councilmember Rodenberg and former council member Markley. And there was a lot of concern in the community about this. It's not something I know a lot about, but I know that I was stopped several times walking down the street by people who were thanking council members for at least expressing concern, even though like Mr. Piaszeki said and and our city attorney said, we are preempted, there's nothing we could do about it. But pretty much everyone on council, from what I remember, spoke out in concern about about 5G in particular. Now, this study wouldn't just be focusing on 5G, from what I understand. And, you know, barring, luring anything else that puts us at greater liability, I think it's a wonderful idea to have a baseline. I mean, how many times do we have we said that we wish we could go back and measure something and then it's too late? It may not make a difference for what happens in Gig Harbor, but in the future, should health effects, for example, be identified, maybe it will change things in some way. Either, well, probably wouldn't be 5G anymore, something else. But at least it would, it would provide some information that that could make a difference in the future. And and for a thousand dollars or something around that, I I think it's smart. So I'm definitely open to pursuing this and letting it go to the next stage would be the RFP to consider. Thank you. And thank you, thank you, Councilmember Woo, for putting this together.
Yes, and I will call on you, Councilmember Woo, if you wanted to answer any of the questions that have been asked so far.
Thank you. So all I'm just going to say is that this is just not limited to 5G. This is about any electronic magnetic waves that might be coming to our city in the future. And and whichever company, I think that Director Knutson would be working with, that their city staff would be working with, would be certainly qualified and a respected company that does this sort of testing. Again, tonight, this is just a a, and I'll make a motion, this would just be a motion to go forward to put out and to gather information together and put out for a request for a proposal for companies. And then that request for proposal would come back to council. And when we figure out how much it's going to cost and what's going to be involved, it would come back to council before this moves forward. So if, are there any more questions? Otherwise, I will make a motion.
I see one from Councilmember Rodenberg.
All right, I councilmember like and really came up with a couple of concerns that I agree with. And and one is the certification of a someone that's going to do the study. We want to make sure that if we get a data point, that it's something we could use and and stand behind, kind of a peer review type of certification for the contractor. And I think if our direction, if what we're doing tonight is giving direction to staff, then we need to be able to tell them what frequency, what what do we really need it for? We, if you just randomly say, you know, gamma rays, then I I think we're going to not end up with data that we could use. So I think I certainly trust staff to figure that out, but it's just a concern. That's all.
We've heard a lot of comments, and I think
Your Honor, there is a motion on the floor.
I haven't made a motion yet.
Oh, I thought you did make a motion.
Oh, I didn't think so.
I, did you hear a motion, City Clerk?
Not a motion yet.
Okay, okay, okay. So maybe it wasn't a formal motion. So is there a formal motion then to move this to direct staff to?
Councilmember Barber wants to make a comment first.
Councilmember Barber. I'm just wondering if we need a motion or if we've gotten a sense of counsel tonight.
Well, I thought there was a motion and and if there isn't, then I don't know that we need that. If we just have a show of hands for support to move this forward to, you know, an RFQ to go out. I I think that would be all we would need, is that correct? Josh and Tony?
I'd be comfortable with that and I I just want to make sure that I know would eat, which he, what each individual council member wants us to do. It's clear to me that Councilmember Woo and Councilmember Denson would like to move forward. But I'm not sure about the rest of you.
Okay, so let's just do maybe a roll call will be easiest, just yeses and nos. Josh, if you want to take note, so we know Councilmember Woo is a yes, Councilmember Denson is a yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Yes, I'd like to know from staff whether they've got time to add this to their plate because it has to be developed by staff and RFP. So I I'd at least like to hear about that.
Okay. Let's, maybe let's finish roll call.
First?
What's that?
Katrina, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, I think between Director Langham and myself, we could pull together an RF2 and and have responses back to council.
Couple months from now.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Barber.
I guess I I have concerns about the usability of the study, but I'd like to have staff have the ability to to put something together and come back to us with a recommendation. And that recommendation, in my opinion, could be that we don't move forward with the study because of the issues that were raised tonight by the attorney, et cetera.
Okay. So I'm counting four in support, but I would
I'm in support as well.
Okay, so there's five, how about Councilmember Lichten?
No, I have concerns about the usability of the information and just the overall broad spectrum of radiation measurements in general. I I, yeah, with my knowledge of public health, I would have a hard time supporting this, any staff time going towards it.
Okay, and Councilmember Storset.
Yep, well, I know we've already got the hands to go forward and I I don't mind learning a bit more, getting some more information from the staff as well. But I do have my reservations, obviously. So thanks.
Okay, so
We have direction.
We have direction, thank you very much. Any other council comments or reports? Yes, Councilmember Barber.
I wanted to let everybody know that I got a tour of the Comaneros Airport last week from the airport manager and had an extensive meeting with him. Generally, everything is running smoothly at the airport, although they could always use more money and that kind of thing. He did want to let us know that they will be trimming some trees and possibly removing some trees that are encroaching on the airport flight lines. So we may hear some conversation from the neighbors along the runways about those trees coming out and they're being as judicious about that tree trimming and tree removal as they could possibly be, knowing that their main job is to keep the airlines safe, the airplanes safe too. And we have a formal advisory board next month, so I should have more information after that first meeting. He also wanted me to let you guys know that if anybody's interested in touring the airport, he's more than happy to give a tour. So if you're interested, let me know and I'll give you his contact information.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to report on my executive meeting that I attended on the 3rd of March with the West Sound Partners for Environmental Restoration. It was a fairly long meeting and there was a lot covered. We were looking at things like regional and legislative updates. They spoke about HB 1099, several other issues. We had roundtable updates, which were quite fascinating from other cities and counties that are part of the Whisper Network. Just some tidbits, Bremerton spent 1.7 million in culvert replacements. Polesbow is also had already completed several fish barrier removals and they're already seeing salmon going farther up the streams and spawning. I updated them on some actions that Gig Harbor's pursuing with our land purchases, the the, you know, starting the feasibility study with the Donkey Creek culvert replacements. One issue that's come up seems to be a growing problem in Puget Sound in general is derelict vessels and what they call no discharge zones. These are on water living, people are starting to live on vessels and dump sewage, raw sewage directly into Puget Sound. They're even thinking of getting the Coast Guard involved in monitoring some of this and enforcing it because it it is a huge problem. We also passed the 2022 Whisper Work Plan, a lot of things involved in that, I won't go through that. And then we also talked about the 2022 Whisper Salmon Recovery Grants. Whispered gotten 24 letters of intent, 18 were full applications, including one from the city of Gig Harbor. Thank you, Jeff, thank Director Langham. And so that's looking pretty positive. There is a site visit on 17th of March, this coming Thursday, they're going to be out looking at the Donkey Creek area, Donkey Park Creek. And then what I'd like to do is, Josh, there was a quite a good video they showed, it's about a five-minute video that I'd like to share here. It's called the 2021 State of the Sound Report. This is put out by the Puget Sound Partnership, it's a group of environmental agencies and everything else. I think this sums up a lot about what's going on. So Josh, if you can play that.
When I'm out at the beaches or on the water.
Is that audio coming through, okay?
Yes. It's hard to explain, it's a very intimate connection in this place that just is home, bound and covered, tradition and legacy all rolled in along.
Hey, come on, Louis. Come on, come on, Louis, let's go kayak. When I'm out on the water, the complexity and the the beauty of it really feed my soul in a way that nothing else does.
Swimming in Puget Sound, it feels like a really intimate experience. The feeling of the water, I swim. This is exquisite. I just find the waters of Puget Sound irresistible.
It's one of the most important estuaries in the whole world. And it is not healthy right now and the trend lines are in the wrong direction.
It's out looking at it, at its surface, it looks okay. There's the water, the tides are still changing, there's still people out there fishing. But underneath, and when you look at salmon killer whales, for example, those are the canaries of the cormorant that tell us much different story. The State of the Sound Report, as well as other reports that have been now are important because they are telling the truth and the reality of what's happening with waterlands. I swim in Puget Sound, but Puget Sound is also the focus of my work. So my team, we are data gatherers, compiling information about over 50 indicators of the health of Puget Sound that we call the Puget Sound vital signs. And those vital signs are telling us that Puget Sound is not doing well and most of them are not trending in the direction that we were hoping for.
Climate change is one of the big barriers and it's getting more and more of a significant factor. The other pressure is growth and development. We have to do a better job of mitigating the impact of all the new people and economic activity. Certainly, funding is a problem, Puget Sound has to be a higher priority.
I like to tell people, you know, if a two-ton killer whale is struggling, what do you think it's doing for you on this ground? What what environmental impacts are you hearing as just an average human being? Some of us are more acutely aware of that than others. And I think as an indigenous person, as a close salmonish person, our people are so aware of that because we live so close to these things. But that doesn't mean that that's not true for other people on this region. We all live in the same place, we all breathe the same air, breathe the same water, so it matters what happens here. There is hope for Puget Sound, I think we can turn this around, but it's going to take everybody. We need to come together to do this. I don't think we have a choice.
Not aware of anybody who says, ah, Puget Sound, who cares? I'm not aware of anybody that says that. But we need more people to say, what do I need to do? And I'll do it.
At the end of the day, seeing people willing to come to the table for the sake of this place that we call home, that gives some hope.
Oh, thank you, Josh. So just to kind of end this, the Puget Sound Partnership has been monitoring Puget Sound. They've, what they have indicators and vital signs, there's about 50 of them that they're looking for, some are like sediment quality, water quality, whatnot. 2021 was the wrap-up of the 10-year monitoring and unfortunately, only five of those vital signs and indicators met their targets. 23 didn't, which is it's an indication of a sound that's suffering. Our city is linked to Puget Sound, we're a maritime fishing village. People made their, people made their lives on that, our indigenous people made their lives from that. So I think it's all the more reason we in the city of Gig Harbor to do what we can to maintain our stormwater runoff systems and we've got some excellent people working on that, just to keep as much as we can out of the Puget Sound. Continue to conserve land for our riparian corridors, it's critical. And remove our fish passage barriers to try to regain our salmon stock and the other indigenous species that are here. So that's it, I don't recall exactly when our next meeting is, I think it might be in two months and then I can report back on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. Any other council reports or comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion or announcement of upcoming meetings? There is a document attached to each agenda now, our agenda planning schedule, and so that is available on our website. And it'll announce a tentative schedule for all upcoming meetings through the next at least couple to few months. So check that out on our website as part of this agenda packet. And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved to adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned, thank you, everyone, have a wonderful evening.